See the minutes from our regular meeting on May the 12th? Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The first order of business is a variance request, Ben.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board of Adjustment. I'm Ben Rhodes, Senior Planner. Before you is an open space variance occurring at 2500 Highway 412 East. This is the same site as the variance and special use permit that was reviewed by the Board of Adjustment in January this year, as some of you might recall. The development has shifted their original, or excuse me, the developers shifted their original plans, and now are seeking an additional variance for the front open space buffer along Highway 412. And that request will pave into the front 12-foot green space buffer on that property. So, and here you see the site plan as provided by the applicant. And this is showing the plan for the entire property. So, the main structure is shown in that darker rectangle right here, same circle in. And that will have a wraparound drive-through that will approach an order pickup window that will be on the west side of the structure. So, this is the same site plan, we're just looking in a little bit more focused into the areas in question. And you see the paving, excuse me, here. So, yeah, you see the paving that is on the red box, that's where the, particularly where the variance is being requested, and that green space buffer. So, I'd like to point out that the applicant will be redeveloping the entire site. As you know, from the staff report memo, this site is used, used to be used as a restaurant, and the majority of it is already paved over, including the front green space buffer. And, let's try to do this with this thing here. Having a little bit of problem with my computer, apologize. So, as I was saying, this used to be a restaurant. So, the variance is over, is only covering the part of the existing lot that happens to not be paved. The applicant will be removing portions of the existing concrete and return, turn that to paving. So, the net result will be somewhat of a wash, if not slightly more green space. And you can see in the darker hatching here, as I circle, that's the area where the concrete, the existing concrete will be removed with the development and returned to green space. So, kind of a net wash in terms of whether there's additional paving or not. For the applicant's statement of heartment, hardship, they are primarily resting their arguments for this variance on the shallow lot depth as compared to the other lots in the area. So, staff ran a thumbnail analysis and determined that the existing lot is approximately 49% more shallow compared to its peers along this section of Highway 412. We believe this meets the test for the hardship. The shallow lot size is unique and not something that is frequently occurring within the C2 zone lots. Furthermore, the existing conditions have existed there for at least 15 years, which meets that second criterion. The applicant states that they are unable to shift the building and drive south due to the limits of the lot depth and the required parking and stacking distances. Finally, due to the green space being added back to the lot, the applicant believes that there will be a net increase in green space, and this would provide better quality alive for the neighborhood. And here you see the site, this is looking to the north. The area, the green space variance, I'll circle that again, is pretty much right there. So, with that, staff believes that there appears to be a legitimate hardship, and we are available for any of your questions. Thank you.
Is there anyone from the audience? Or representative of the property? Please come, do you have any comments? Please state your name and address.
My name is Jake Chavis, I'm representing Bates &amp; Associates in Seven Breaux, I'm the engineer on the project. I'm here for any questions, if you have any.
Anyone from the board? If being no comments from the board, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the variance requested, as requested.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Sally? McKinney?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Kenzie?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Motion is approved. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the Board of Adjustments.
Still moved.
Second.
Now, the motion is second to adjourn the Board of Adjustments. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Board of Adjustments is adjourned. I now call to order the City of Solomon Springs Planning Commission on this Tuesday, November the 10th, 2020. Roll call, please.
Song?
Here.
Sally?
Here.
Kenny?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Driscoll?
Here.
Kenzie?
Here.
You have all received the minutes from the October the 13th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. Are there any changes or corrections to said minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Still moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as published. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes from October 13th are approved. First agenda item is a plat development permit, PP 20-06, Ben Rhodes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. I am Ben Rhodes, Senior Planner. Before you is a plumbary plat for the Lawless Ranch Edition, this is occurring at 2800 block of North Teresa Drive. This is the plat out three lots and Phase 1 of that addition. And here you see the full site plan, the detention basin is existing. What is proposed is the street and the three lots. This is being done now because when Phase 1 was originally submitted, there was only one way in and out of the subdivisions, so per city codes, there is a limit of 30 units on one access. So, since the time Phase 1 has been done, the developer has added a secondary emergency access road that permits additional units to be allowed on the main access. So, it basically increases the density. And, just on a side note, what that did is that did allow for the rest of the units in there to be constructed. They were capped at a certain point, and then once that, they put that in, then they were able to finish the rest of the duplexes in that subdivision. So, this is what it looks like, looking to the north. The arrow pointed in the area that's being done, again, this is just to be able to finish out Phase 1 in order to complete it due to the inhibiting factors earlier because of that single access. So, we are recommending approval with no needed conditions, and we stand ready for any of your questions. Thank you.
Your representative from the developer?
Yes, sir, Ron Holmeyer, Civil Engineering, 701 South Mount Olive. I'm just here to answer any questions, if you have any.
Thank you, Ron. Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the planning commissioners? Being no questions or concerns, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve PP 20-06.
I have a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Sally?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Song?
Preliminary plat development, PP 2006, is approved. This will go to the board on December the 1st, 2020. Next item is a rezoning development permit, RC 20-09, Mr. Rhodes.
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Chairman and Planning Commission. So, you're now considering a rezoning request, this is occurring at the 900 block of East Harvard Street. This is to go from R2 and R3, or R2 and R3 to I1, which is industrial. In addition, the applicant is proposing to split off the main lot, creating a smaller residential lot at the corner of Heiko and Harvard Streets. This lot will retain the R3 zoning, and I will present on both permits at this time since they're occurring on the same property. So, looking at the lot split survey, as you know, the city does approve these, the staff. This is being shown just for information only and to explain further what's going on with the rezoning. So, the plan is to split off Lot 2 into two lots, creating Lot 2A, shown on the left of the red line, with the remainder of the lot of, or excuse me, of Lot 2B being on, going with the I1 zone. So, this is the zoning plan that's been submitted by the applicant. You'll note that the proposed rezoning is tucked behind the residences on South Heiko in such, in a similar manner as the industrial zones to the north and south of the site. In addition, it should be understood that the development of this parcel will require that the applicant installs screening along the shared residential lot lines with the subject property, and furthermore, that mandatory 30-foot wide green space buffer will limit construction abutting to the residential lot lines. Actually, I wouldn't have had too far. So, these rules were built into the I1 zone exclusively to minimize the potential impact of the industrial development on existing future residential lots. So, there is a letter that's attached to the memo with concerns of the visual impacts of the proposed use. This will be illuminated with the required screening. Furthermore, staff has been informed that the applicant will no longer be pursuing the original plan to develop the site as an asphalt shingle recycling center. So, in terms of the future land use map, you can see that part of the site is designated as a future industrial, that's in the purple shading, with the balance of the property slated as residential. Here's that same map, I just zoomed it out a bit more so you can see the wider neighborhood context. So, when, when looking at the wider view, you can clearly see that the intent behind the future land use map was to cover the residential shading for the houses that front on the west side of Heiko from Harvard, south to East Jewell Street. When this map was created, there was no plan, or at least the intent of the map was not to match the land use designations to actual property lines, but rather paint a broader 30,000-foot view of the general areas where different land uses are appropriate. So, in other words, the map shading should not be read literally in terms of the precise location of each land use. With that understanding, the bump out here, the orange, is intended to represent the homes, as I stated, on the west side of Heiko, and not necessarily the properties behind those homes. And this is evidenced by the residential shading shown in the industrial property that was active when this map was created, and that would be, as I'm shading in right there. Therefore, staff believes that the highest and best use of this property is industrial, matching the, closer to the purple area shown on the west side view of this map here. Finally, as I mentioned earlier, the applicant is keeping the residential zone on the southwest corner of Heiko and Harvard, where there is no house, thus allowing a continued residential development pattern on the west side of Heiko. And here you can see the site, this is looking to the north. So, you can see the established residential here on this side, with the industrial to the north up in the distance, as well as industrial down here towards the south, that's just outside of the view of the image there. So, with that, staff is recommending approval of the I1 zone, and we are available for any of your questions. Thank you.
Do we have a representative from the property? No. Are you a representative of the property?
Owner.
Please state your name and address.
Okay, Jason Dugger, 548 Arbor Acres Avenue. Just here to answer any questions.
Comments from the audience? Sir? Sir, please come to the mic and state your name and address.
Bob Michael, 1251 Country Lane, Solomon Springs, Arkansas.
Sir, could you repeat your name again and address, please?
Bob, Bob Michael.
Bob Michael. And your address?
1251 Country Lane.
Thank you.
My interest in this is I own the properties at 714 and 716 South Heiko. We've had a tremendous amount of trouble with tenants in our properties.
Sir, can you speak up into the mic? We're having a hard time. I'm sorry.
We've had a tremendous amount of trouble with the adjacent industrial site. I have no idea who owns it now, I think maybe it's a Walmart warehouse. It used to be called Allen's Canning Warehouse, with dust in that area and the noise of the tractor-traglers coming in and out. I understand that Mr. Dugger has left a fairly generous green zone in between what he's using, or proposed to use, and the current residential area. But, my interest would be that since, I think I heard that we were doing away with the asphalt project, is that true or false?
Mr. Dugger, can you answer that question, please? Sir, let Mr. Dugger come up to the microphone to answer that question.
Yes, sir, the intent is to not do the asphalt recycling. Our goal in this property is to do a light commercial building, so somewhere around 5,000 square feet right underneath that. And then our thoughts are to maybe do, you know, just a couple of those buildings, obviously with the setback there from the properties, and then, you know, putting the skirting up to allow, you know, to allow that privacy for the homeowners. But, our thought is that it would be something that's operational between 8 to 5 to give the, just the most amount of, you know, privacy to the homeowners around.
Sir, I'll give the mic back to you if you have any follow-up.
Well, there's not a whole lot of follow-up. I've owned a property next to the Duggers for quite some time, and I had no problem with them. It's just that I didn't want it to turn into something that we have, that we continue to have over on the previous Allen Warehouse site. And I think that's my major concern.
Okay, sir, thank you for your comments. Anyone else from the audience with concerns or comments?
Just to make it clear, on the west side of the property, there's no houses built. It's just empties.
Well, that's not exactly accurate. There is a house back in there.
Okay.
It's just very hard to see.
Okay.
It's probably right around in here.
Got it.
It's very, very wooded, very wooded, so it's, you know, the screening there should not be an issue at all, as you can see from the pictures how many trees there are. Now, in the winter, obviously, that will be a different story when the foliage goes. But, yeah, that, that house is not abutting directly on the line, it's a little further back in there, so.
Got it, thank you.
Commissioners, any other? I have a couple of questions, Ben. The 30-foot green space, is that only on the east side of the property line?
It would be, I believe, on the east side where it abuts residential zoning, so if I may go back to the map that shows that.
Please do.
So, where the shading, and I don't know if you can see that, I know it's kind of hard to read from that far distance, but where this hatching is, that's the subject property. So, the screening and the 30-foot buffer would be along the lines abutting the residential, so.
Okay. Can you take it over to your other screen? Okay, I got you right there, all right.
So, I don't know if you saw me draw that, there's a red line now. So, that's the line that's abutting that residential. Now, of course, it also is abutting residential on the other side, so there's well, but they're, you know, they have a lot of screening with that vegetation, but they would still be required to put something up, you know, in case, for during the winter months, so that they wouldn't be seeing the, any, you know, the operations of the industrial site at their homes.
Okay, and the 30-foot green space is along the east side of the property?
How the code's written is it's anywhere where it's abutting residential.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. I have one other question. Is the streets on Heiko and East Harvard, are they able to support the probably six-to-eight wheel truck traffic that you would have in there, or do, or does the owner anticipate getting that? I know that Heiko prohibits semi-tractor trailer traffic.
Justin Bland, City Engineer. Yeah, in my opinion, Heiko is in, is in good shape, as well as that section of Harvard. You know, I think Heiko's about 24 feet wide. It's hard to say specifically without an exact proposal, but I mean, for commercial, like it's commercial type use, like he's, what's been described, warehouses and smaller trucks, I don't see it being an issue. If you're talking semi-trucks, we may have to have a conversation when they do that development, but, but yeah, generally speaking, the roads are in good shape there.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other comments from the commissioners?
So, this is not a planning commission question, but I have one question for Mr. Rhodes. So, I appreciate Mr. Michael coming to us and commented on the dust issue. So, if there's an issue like that, where do you go? I mean, is there a regulation on, like, dust coming from the industrial properties?
Nothing comes specifically to mind on dust in particular. I do know there is a noise ordinance, obviously, but I would say that several things to keep in mind, just as a context. When the industrial, really, in this entire quarter of town was developed, was long before our current zoning and long before our landscaping regulations. So, if you want to look at a comparable project that would be similar to what would ultimately come in there, the Black Hills project out on North Country Club with their landscaping and the green space buffers, it's industrial as well. That will be kind of what this will look like. So, you know, they're not going to be able to, with the green space and the landscaping, the trees, that will go a long way in shielding out some of that dust, if there is dust. Also, a lot of that might be generated by the fact that there's gravel parking lots. In fact, I'm pretty sure that's where it's coming from. Nowadays, the code requires lots to be paved unless it's under 10 spots.
Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve RC 2009, the rezoning development permit.
I have a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Sally?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Our permit is approved. This will go to the Board of Directors on December the 1st, 2020. Next item on our agenda is code revision approval. Mr. Rhodes.
Let's get to the right slide. There we are. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. So, we're shifting gears now and looking at the proposed code update. This update is to Chapter 54, which is the land use code. The change will require that the Planning Commission reviews and provides a recommendation on annexations that are coming to the city. The primary need for this is for the Commission to look at, particularly in the zoning, which would be similar to rezoning application requests that you currently look at. This will also allow the public to be notified, putting the burden of this back on the petitioners wishing the annex into the city. Like the last code change, we are only updating the permitting aspect, so no other regulations are being changed with this. However, we are adding in criteria by which to analyze an annexation and zoning permit, which would be the same with all other permits that the Commission or the board reviews. All the criteria for that is included in the memorandum. The permit fee will be $150. This is the same as a rezoning application. We're proposing to take this ordinance with your recommendation to the board on December 1st, with permits becoming effective by late winter or early spring. As with other permits that are being introduced, staff will ensure that the public is made aware of the new requirements if they do go into effect. And we are recommending approval of the ordinance as presented, and we're available for any of your questions. Thank you.
Any questions from the commissioners? I'll entertain, I'll entertain a motion. I'll entertain, I'll entertain a motion.
移到 On the update of the land use code, chapter fifty-four.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
McKinney?
Yes.
Dris- or Smith?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
The code revision has been approved. Next, next item on the agenda is board approved permits. Ben, Mr. Rhodes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission, and just on a note on that last item, that will go on the board, uh, December first. Um, so, uh, for this one, um, we are looking at a, a final plat permit. Uh, this one, um, does not require your recommendation as it is identical to the corresponding preliminary plat. So as with, um, other, uh, staff approved permits, you're seeing this just for information only. Uh, and this is the Grandview addition, phase one, at thirty-nine oh one North Kenwood. Project is finishing out phase one for seventy-nine new single-family lots. Uh, we do not have a firm date right now for the board review du- um, board review due to the project still being under construction. Um, uh, and this cannot be confirmed until the, uh, final inspections have come in completed on, on that phase. So, uh, here you see the, uh, site plan, uh, with the attention being shown up on the top right corner, Lot Thirty-seven. And all lots will face interior addition of new new driveways accessing onto Kenwood. And, uh, here's the, uh, site view as from a month ago. Uh, I've been told that I believe the, uh, paver will go out there next week, uh, to finish the paving and they'll have to do some final inspections on water flow and whatnot, um, but it should be pretty close to being finished, uh, soon. Um, staff will be, uh, recommending approval, uh, when this is presented to the city board and we are available for any questions. Thank you.
Questions from commissioners? Uh, I don't think we have a action to take on this. So the next item on the agenda is staff approved permits.
Right, um, thank you again, uh, Mr. Chairman, um, Commission. Um, so as you know, last month, uh, you approved the Mission Hills addition. Um, this went to the city board and was approved last Tuesday. Um, just wanted to give you an update on that. Um, since the original review, staff, uh, did take a second look at the condition and we updated the wording to better reflect the intent, um, to require fencing along the property that contains the, um, detention basin. Um, the board was made aware that staff made this update, uh, when this was presented. Um, the new condition is what's shown below with a longer bit of text. So I'll just give you a few minutes to read this. I know you didn't get this in your packet, uh, and if you have any questions, just let me know, so, thank you. Okay, I got the point from the chairman. I think he said indicative that there's no questions on that. So we'll move on. Um, so, uh, these are the, uh, staff approved permits that we go through every month, just letting you know what we're look, working on behind the scenes. Um, so, um, I will present both, um, of the applications and we'll open up for any questions at the end. Um, also, I'm not going to present again on the Dugger lot split since you've already looked at that, uh, with the rezoning, um, that was item D two on the agenda. So the, uh, first permit, uh, has, uh, been with staff since midsummer. Uh, we've had it on hold due to the need to rezone the Villa View Estates in order to allow for, uh, this lot line adjustment. So as you recall, that you looked at the rezoning Villa View last, uh, time at the commission. Uh, so this is occurring at the twenty-five, uh, hundred block of Orchard Hill Road and, uh, will be presented to the city board on December first for easements. Here's the, uh, site plan. Uh, what's happening is that the lot line on the southern lot is shifting upwards to take in, um, land from Lot Seven R, giving that land to Lot, uh, Eight B R. And, um, for the next review item, uh, which is, uh, item G three on today's agenda, uh, we're looking at a standard lot split occurring at the, uh, fourteen hundred, uh, Highway four twelve, which is the location of the former Biners, Bynum's Furniture Store. This one, um, already went to the board on November third for easements and was, was accepted at that meeting. And, uh, here you see the site plan, Lot One containing the, uh, store with the remaining area for an initial lot. Uh, both have access easements benefiting each other, so cross-access will be allowed between the lots. Staff has already signed this and I believe, uh, we have received the filed copy back. Um, and this concludes staff's presentation on the staff approved permits and we're standing ready for any of your questions. Thank you.
Is there any questions from the commissioners or the staff? No one has questions, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
移到 Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.